Good evening, welcome to the March 25th Regular City Council Meeting. Dee Stiles Elliott, will you please call roll?
Mayor Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Delira.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerin.
Here.
Councilmember Gaither.
Here.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Present.
Good. So for community announcements tonight, first of all, street sweeping. As we move into spring, you'll start seeing our street sweepers around the city. This is a reminder to utilize legal off-street parking when available and bring garbage cans and other obstructions off the streets so the sweepers have a clear path. You can view the street sweeping schedule at pullman-wa.gov/forward slash sweeping. And the city of Pullman is once again partnering with Pullman Disposal for spring cleanup. It'll be on Saturday, April 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Pullman Disposal, which is at 135 Northwest Herald Drive. All items must be sorted, and you can go to their website, and it'll actually give all the information of what items they accept or not as a part of the spring cleanup. It's a great opportunity to get the space cleaned up at a reduced cost. Pullman City Council will have a special meeting with Associate Students of Washington State University tomorrow night. It'll be starting at 5:30 at the WSU Cub Ballroom, Room 204, to discuss common interests for the community. From Parks and Rec, this next week is Spirit Week at Pullman Parks and Rec, brought by the Recreation Center for daily giveaways and prizes. And don't forget to dress up. Themes, this year's daily themes are Monday is your favorite band/ music group, Tuesday is your favorite hobby or interest, Wednesday is what do you want to be when you grow up, Thursday your favorite book/ movie/ TV show, and Friday your future retirement. So have to start thinking about what we're gonna wear. For Fridays, come to the Pullman Aquatics and Fitness Center every Friday night in April. This is from 3:30 to 8:00 p.m. for Fun Fridays, and this is free to all ages. And then with Neil Public Library, come to Gardening for Pollinators at Neil Public Library on Tuesday, April 1st, at 1:00 p.m. to learn how to select and plant the right plants to support honeybees and native pollinators in your gardener community. And also, the VITA's RAS/ IRS certified volunteers will be offering free help with federal tax returns on Saturday, April 5th, and Saturday, April 12th, from 12:00 to 4:00 at the Neil Public Library. And as always, to see listings of other community events, please visit the city's tourism page at visitpullman.com/events. Next up on the agenda is community comments. This agenda item is the first of two opportunities during the meeting for public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials. Specifically, this item is reserved for public comments concerned or other information not related to a previous public hearing or final action on the agenda. Final action items include the confirmation appointments, consent agenda, and regular agenda items. This agenda item for comments is not to exceed 30 minutes in total. Comments should be directed to the mayor or the city as a body. No comment should be directed to individual councilmembers. If you'd like to provide public comment on a non-agenda item, we'll have an opportunity later on for the agenda item once. If you could please come up. There is a sign-in sheet. We ask that you do sign in so that when we're doing minutes, that we get your name right. That's very helpful. Dee appreciates that. And so for that, who would like to, is anyone who would like to provide public comment?
I should type it in, or come up there?
You're right there. Right where you're at is great.
Type in my name?
Yes, please. Oh, oh, no, you can just speak.
Oh, okay. Each of you has an envelope containing pertinent information regarding the Charlie Brown Water Tower. My name is Doug Rudolph. I was a sophomore at Pullman High School in 1963, when I painted Charlie Brown on the water tower in the middle of the night as graffiti. I never imagined it would become a much-loved Pullman icon. Sixty years later, a super-talented local artist, David Hoyt, has created many Charlie Brown items available at Neil's Flowers and Gifts in the Damon Barn Ranch, such as greeting cards, coasters, magnets, postcards, and bumper stickers. Charlie Brown t-shirts can be ordered from Mr. Hoyt as well, like the one I'm wearing. The painting has been saved more than once by the city over the years. In your packet, there's a photo of the tower, and as you can see, Charlie is gradually being covered with electronic stuff. Please do not let the painting disappear under all the electronics. It would most likely be expensive to relocate the electronics on the tower, if it was even possible. A solution would be having Charlie repainted on the south side of the tower. This location is the only one left that's free of electronics. This would have to be more economical than moving the items covering Charlie. Perhaps donations for repainting could be arranged. Please save Charlie Brown. The painting is in the most popular spot for stuff that blocks the painting. Repainting him a couple feet higher probably would not work for very long. Please save Charlie Brown. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next person, please.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, City Council, city leaders. My name's Mackenzie Bremet, and I'm the President of the Board of Directors for the Pullman Chamber of Commerce. Later in the meeting, you'll hear from our Executive Director, Marie Dimkosky, and Tourism Manager, Alexis Foran, about the incredible successes they've had serving as the tourism provider for the city of Pullman. As some of you may know, this chamber's tourism contract with the city concludes its three-year term at the end of 2025. In December, after reviewing the approved budget, we learned that the contract would not be renewed, but instead, due to an updated city code, would need to go out to an RFP. We're still waiting for the RFP to re-released. In addition to leaving two employees wondering if they'll have jobs in eight months, and uncertainty for community events people have grown fond of, the contract/RFP process makes it nearly impossible to develop long-term and meaningful tourism plans for the city. We hope that you, like the rest of the Chamber Board, many of us are here tonight, are impressed with what this small but mighty team has accomplished in the past two years. As you listen to their presentations, I urge you to consider the detriment to our community if going forward, the contract is not created with a renewable clause and the RFP process carefully reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide public comment?
Hello, Bobby Ryder with Downtown Pullman Association. I'm here to read a statement from Judy Cold, who is not able to be here tonight. Judy Cold, President of the Downtown Pullman Association. So, Dear Mayor Benjamin and Honorable City Council Members, the Downtown Pullman Association is dedicated to the improvement of Pullman's historic downtown. We view the vitality of the Pullman downtown as critical to the Pullman community and our downtown businesses and worthy of investment. To this end, the DPA, as a result of T-Mobile grant funding, is pleased to donate to the city of Pullman $42,000 worth of cash and materials for pedestrian light pole banners and lighting for downtown enhancements. Sincerely, Judy Cold. I also would like to add that the lights, as envisioned, would be used, color-changing lights in the High Street Plaza, so that they could change with seasons or seasonal events, and we hope that you'll use them in that way. And that white lights are in the mix for wrapping the pedestrian poles that are available down Main Street. And the last thing I want to mention is that DPA is sponsoring a pub crawl on April 11th from 5:00 to 10:00, and we're selling tickets now. For $50, you get your tickets, and you get a super-cool trucker hat, and who wouldn't want that that says Downtown Pullman? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next person?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Chelsea Whitney, and I am the Promotions Chair for the Downtown Pullman Association. I'm here to speak on behalf of the DPA, as well as other community groups, working tirelessly to bring life and connection to our beautiful and newly renovated downtown. The newly adopted $245 permit fee required to hold events in the city center is creating a significant barrier, especially for nonprofits operating on limited budgets. These events, whether it's a small community gathering, a music performance, or a fundraiser, are not just enjoyable experiences. They are essential to fulfilling your mission of combating loneliness and fostering connection. Downtown events bring people together, create shared experiences, and build a sense of belonging, something we all recognize and is now more important than ever. To date, the Downtown Pullman Association has invested around $10,000 in tables and chairs to enhance the public plazas, making these spaces more inviting for residents and visitors alike. Ironically, we are now being asked to pay a permit fee to use the very furniture we purchased to benefit the city. This creates a disincentive for us and other organizations to host events that activate these public spaces. I urge you to consider waiving the $245 permit fee for nonprofits and significantly reducing the fee for any organization holding a community event downtown. Doing so would encourage more frequent and accessible events, ensuring that Downtown Pullman continues to thrive as a vibrant and welcoming space for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide public comment? Seeing none, I'll go and close non-agenda item, public comments. And next up is City Councilmember comments, and I'll start with Councilmember Fagerin.
Thank you. I just want to first acknowledge and thank you to those who participated in the public comments today. I have two comments I'd like to say. First off, I want to thank Dr. Ed Switzer and SCL and Beatrice Switzer for the offer to take over the aquatics and operations. Personally, I believe that this is a much-needed solution to the facility's operational challenges. I'm in full support of this and would be willing to draft or work with any number of my city council colleagues to draft a statement of support. Two, in regards to the trail that goes through the West End Villas, I just want to follow up on the amount of comments we've been receiving from the public and just reiterate what has already been said. The developer, this is private land, and in my contact with developers, they let me know that they decided to increase the number of units, which led to the permit shutdown of that trail, unfortunately. However, I'm willing to work with whatever stakeholders in order to keep that trail in place. I know that it has been used by families and students for a number of years, including myself. Thank you.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. I just have four things, but I'm gonna say two. The first is, the Gladish Center now has space, we're going to have, I'm on the board there, we're gonna have workspaces available for rent, so if you're a work-at-home person or you don't have an office but you'd like one, there will be spaces available for rent on a full-time or a part-time basis. And the reason I'm telling you this is partly to get it out into the community, and we'll be releasing information about that soon. But also, I want to acknowledge Sean Miller here at the city. He is our Economic Development Person, and he worked closely with Gladish to help Gladish come up with, to bring this idea to fruition. And so I really want everyone to know that the city, and specifically Sean, has worked very hard on that, and we all really appreciate him. Secondly, I have a comment about the Consent Agenda Number 11. I'm not going to request it be pulled, but what I would like to say, and this has to do with the change order that we are approving from Apollo Construction for the finishing up of the downtown project. There's been some community chatter that makes this appear as if it's not being transparent, as if there isn't enough public information about it, and why is it just part of the consent agenda? And I want to address that. There is a list of the actual items that are asked, that we are asked to cover in addition to what has already been spent, and they are items that back, the whole project, we've been told, we could run into some unexpected things, like an old concrete street down, adjacent to downtown, that they had to completely tear out once they, because they had rebar in it, and they couldn't do the work they needed to do down on the east end of town. So that's one example. We were told all the way through, there are going to be things that could come up, and we don't know what they are. And some of the other things are just aesthetics for downtown, like tree rings around the trees. There's some necessary things, and if you're interested in seeing it, you can go to, you can see it on our agenda, there's a list of the items. So I just want to say that we knew that this could happen. Apollo has been exemplary to work with by all accounts, the downtown businesses, the city staff, everyone has really enjoyed them. And the final thing I want to say, if anyone has ever had a home project or at your business, some renovation project, has it ever finished on time? And has it ever come in on budget? So that's just kind of what we're dealing with here, and I just want to sort of get that out there as a counter-narrative to some of the things I've been hearing. Thank you.
Councilmember Guido?
Well, I just want to say I appreciate Councilmember Parks' comments as far as transparency and, you know, the relatable circumstance of oftentimes projects not always coming in as expected. But I also want to follow up with Councilmember Fagerin's comment acknowledging all the letters and comments we are receiving about the Roberts Street path, and how much of it, whether it was intended or not, it has turned into a community asset. And I hope that we can find some kind of solution or work with the owners to see if we can negotiate something, because I do recognize that that is something that people really have grown attached to, and it's serving a purpose, and I'd like to see if we could do something about that.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Cool. Well, I mean, a lot of the stuff has already been said, so I appreciate my fellow councilmembers. Eric, I'd definitely be interested in helping you with that letter of support. You know, as Anne's already said, you know, and I will have something later on as far as a future topic, but we really wanted to listen to the community as much as we possibly could, and we were warned, the more changes we made to the final downtown project, we were warned, it's gonna cost more. It's gonna take more time. And, you know, we decided, well, we wanted to do that. We wanted to make those changes that the community, you know, asked for, and so we did. And of course, we were expecting to run into some things, and we did. So, moving on from there, as far as the trails, I just gotta say, okay. My, I grew up over on Dillon Street in Military Hill, and my parents went to work before I left for school. So I had to get myself to Jefferson Elementary and then later on to Pullman High School. So we were constantly looking for different ways, trails, make our own trails, all over the place. Oftentimes, those would get shut down, and we'd find a new place, you know? And it may take, it may mean that I had to wake up earlier or whatnot. That's kind of what we had to deal with. I was surprised at the number of parents that were advocating for their kids. I never had that. I mean, that's cool, but also, you know, that was not something I grew up with. I will say this, we have faced a similar thing before, and this was about, I don't know, five, six years ago, and it was a trail that was going through someone's yard. And the person sold, and the new person took over the house, they didn't want that trail going through the yard anymore. And there was a big commotion about us closing down the trail. Wasn't our choice. So, this happens. And as far as that Robert Street, there was a trail before all those houses went in, kind of right next to Thomas, that you could cut right up through and then down. I would take that all the time. I went over there and looked at it, and it's a pretty awesome trail, the other one that comes off of Ridgeline and Robert, and it does look like a pretty good trail. Now, I agree with my fellow councilmembers that if there's a way for Mr. Mater, Superintendent Maxwell, and us to be able to work together, that would be great. I know Mr. Mater had said for the school to contact him at the planning meeting if they wanted to keep that trail going. So I think there's been a little miscommunication between everything. Of course, if we can keep it going, that's great, but it's also private property, but it's a cool little trail, so that's my comments on there.
Councilmember Delira?
No comment.
Councilmember Gaither?
No comment.
Councilmember Wright?
Okay. Sorry, when you're technologically somewhat illiterate, it takes a while to get there. I would mainly like to concur with the comments made particularly by Councilmember Parks. I think it is very important that we do have true transparency as it pertains to the downtown project. It's important to note that these things do happen, but it is also important to make sure that we clear up any misperception of trying to bury something in a consent agenda. That certainly is never the case, and that's why it's important that we truly comment about it. And having said that, I'll just kind of jump over to the comments that Councilmember Weller just made, and I do remember the previous discussion that we had about trails through someone's yard, and those things happen, and, you know, we try to mitigate some of those things as best as we can. My understanding on this current West Villas project is that this is mainly a temporary situation with safety in mind because of the amount of heavy equipment that's gonna be going through, and so if there is anything that we, the city council, is charged with, that would be the safety aspect of our citizens. So I think we also need to remember that that's a factor as well. So, thank you, and I appreciate the ability to make these comments from afar.
Thank you. Next up is City Council Future Agenda Item Requests. Are there any councilmembers that have a future agenda item request? Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think as we just talked about, being able to see where we are at the downtown project, the place that we're at, the change orders that have gone on, if there are any further change orders that are needed, I think that would be good. I would also, if it can be roped in thad, to be, to kind of look at the idea of the, what Chelsea had mentioned about the nonprofits and so on and so forth, in that whole downtown project discussion.
This would be two different...
Oh, it's two different, it can't be roped in, that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, cool. Well, the one, definitely update on the downtown project and the change orders. And then, a separate one would be a discussion about the nonprofits and the waiving, as Chelsea has mentioned, so.
So is there a councilmember second, first of all, on the downtown project status?
Second.
Second, and then is there a second on the nonprofit one?
Second.
Okay, so, okay, so we'll add those for future agenda items. Next item up is community comments on final action items on the agenda. This agenda item is the second of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials on the agenda items that the city council will take final action at the meeting, excluding items where public comment was previously accepted. Final action items include confirmation of appointments, consent agenda items, and regular agenda items. This agenda item for comments is not to exceed 30 minutes in total. Comments should be directed to the mayor or the city council as a body. No comment should be directed to an individual councilmember. Is there anyone who'd like to provide comments, community comments on any final action items? Seeing none, we'll close that. Next item up, I have confirmation of appointments. Before you, two individuals that I'm recommending for appointment to the Environmental Resilience Commission. And entertain a motion?
A motion, a motion confirming the appointment of Carlos Rojo and Kelly Cooper to the Environmental Resilience Commission with terms expiring December 31st, 2028.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say, these are two really incredible additions to this commission, and I'm really excited that they came forward to apply for it.
Yes. And we have a number of other commission openings still available, so if people are interested in volunteering. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next up is presentations, and first up, we have Marie Dimkosky, who's the Executive Director of the Pullman Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. And so with that, Marie, it's always a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, staff. Appreciate being here again. I'm Marie Dimkosky, Executive Director of the Pullman Chamber and Visitor Center. Thank you for the invitation to speak tonight. I think you're gonna be pleasantly surprised at all the information that's gonna be given to you in a little bit with Alexis. As a reminder, the Pullman Chamber of Commerce was incorporated in 1956. We are a 501(c)(6) membership-driven nonprofit organization, and we're deeply committed to making Pullman a better place to live, work, and do business. The chamber has four employees. We're a very small team, but as Mackenzie mentioned, we're mighty. We have a very active and helpful board. Many of them are here. I think there's eight of them, I counted. And we get to do a lot, and we accomplish a lot with a team of four. As a local chamber, our primary goal is, I forgot to move slides, let's see if I can make sure to remember to do, there we go. As a local chamber, our primary goal is to serve our members and look for ways we can be a resource, as well as promoting, advocating, and supporting their work. One of the highlights of the work we get to do is celebrating new businesses in Pullman, and pictured here is a few of our board members with our chamber champions at the opening of Larissa's Apron Green. Alexis is going to share a little bit more about events and tourism-related activities the chamber is involved in, but I'd also like to highlight a few of our other priorities. In 2024, we hosted or co-hosted over 12 events to highlight new businesses or support those downtown that are impacted by construction with our ambassadors, or chamber champions, as we like to call them. During the legislative session, we meet twice a month with our state representatives to ask questions and inform them of the impacts decisions made in Olympia have here locally. We have a wide range of business and public sector representation at our meetings, and we appreciate the support from our District 9 representatives, all three whom are Pullman Chamber members and supportive of the chamber. Topics at the meeting focus on everything from minimum wage, insurance costs, childcare, rent control bills, and transportation. Our most recent show of support for our member businesses was adding a new benefit to reimburse our members for a Type C right-of-way permit. We did this by using... We did this by using dollars from our community investment fund. I mentioned earlier that our organization is driven by our membership. We've been doing a lot of listening to our members, to our local businesses, and we'll continue to find new ways to be a resource and to advocate on their behalf. Before I turn it over to Alexis, I just want to thank my chamber team. It is by far the best team I've had in the 17 years I've been at the chamber, and you're going to hear from Alexis, and you're going to you're going to be as impressed. I also want to thank the very supportive Board of Directors this year, led by Mackenzie Brummet. We can't do our work without the support of the board, and I just want to thank them. And to all of you who support our chamber events and come out to our lunches, our community events, we really appreciate that. So let me introduce you to Alexis Faran.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name's Alexis Faran, and I'm the Tourism Promotions Manager with the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm excited to share with you the work that I've done for Visit Pullman during 2024, as well as the projects that are currently in progress for 2025. Since assuming my role a year and a half ago, I began to address how best to answer the needs outlined in the city-approved RFP. And tonight, I would like to highlight how I have worked to align my efforts with what was requested. Among the several needs outlined in the RFP, a top priority was to create a brand-new tourism website that would serve as an information hub for visitors and community members alike, that promoted the vitality and efforts of our businesses and organizations within Pullman, as well as having a centralized community events calendar. This site would be intended, also be intended to serve as a bridge to other organizations' websites, such as the City Pullman, WSU, and the Chamber of Commerce as well. I began the search for the right website developer to collaborate with for this important project, and after conducting several interviews, we selected what, to me, was the obvious choice, Simple View. Known within the tourism industry as a leading provider for destination marketing organizations, Simple View provided us with a website design that is backed by research, analytics, and user testing, where we are aided with quarterly search engine optimization and key performance indicator reports to help increase and generate organic leads, user engagement, and conversions. We contracted in January, and by March, Madeline Maxwell, the chamber's communication coordinator, and myself began working with our design and build team, attending bi-weekly training on both the front end, back ends of our site, as our immersion team worked hard to design a site map that carefully addressed our specific needs. Visit Pullman launched in late October 2024 and just recently celebrated its hard launch earlier this month. A struggle that many DMOs face is dealing with fragmented technology when using separate CRM and content management platforms, because inevitably, over time, communication between the two breaks down. So by combining them, we streamlined operations to help optimize our marketing efforts and efficiency. The entire site was built with efficiency in mind from back to front, and will be able to grow along with our community for years to come, thanks to our continuously updated cloud-based system that will maintain pace with digital marketing and data management Use of the city-approved brand guide was paramount when designing our new site. We took the work done by Arnett Modrow and handed it over to our design team to make sure we captured the essence of our community accurately. From the playful but friendly topography to the bold color palette, you'll find elements pulled directly from the city's brand guide. The rays of sun and the rolling hills of the Palouse, for instance, are thoughtfully displayed throughout the entire site. The interactive map found on the homepage highlights some of Pullman's most iconic landmarks, from Geese Field to Pine Street Bridge, as well as noting each of our four distinct neighborhoods. With their respective water towers are all represented, along with a descriptive synopsis accompanying each outlined district. Our intention was to assist in familiarizing our guests with Pullman in a way that felt personal, authentic, and inviting. Our site features a fully loaded events calendar prominently featured on the homepage, so visitors, students, and community members alike can easily find out what's going on, whether it be trivia night, live theater, or a WSU sporting event. VisitPullman.com is now the go-to source for all things Pullman. With our ease to fill event submission form, our community's active organizations and businesses can add to the calendar, allowing for greater reach when promoting their events. Marketing efforts promoting VisitPullman.com are well underway, partnering with geo-targeted publications in the drive-to markets, as well as paid ads on social media. As part of welcoming our visitors, table tents with QR codes guiding guests to the site were delivered to all of our hotels and placed in their lobbies and guestrooms, as well as heavily trafficked destinations our visitors frequent, and the QR code can also be found on the city's brand-new downtown kiosks. To build our digital media asset library, I partnered with CrowdRiff, a popular marketing platform in the travel industry. CrowdRiff allows for us to easily source, manage, and publish user-generated content and short-form videos. We have also connected with locally sourced content creators who will offer an authentic glimpse into life in Pullman. Just recently, we received our very first batch of briefs, which will assist us greatly in our marketing efforts, providing our visitors with a visual storytelling of organic, original, authentic Pullman experiences. These will be found on all of Visit Pullman's socials, including the newly created Visit Pullman TikTok and YouTube channel, so please be sure to follow us if you don't already. In response to the city's request to accurately perform detailed market research, I contracted with Placer AI, a location intelligence platform that provides detailed information about who our customers, where are they coming from, how long do they stay with us, and where do they go while they're in town. This information will allow us to tailor promotions, optimize marketing strategies, and make data-driven decisions moving forward. The long-asked question of how to gauge attendance for ticketless events such as Lantal Festival can not only be answered but leveraged. I have recently been working with a longtime supporter of the National Lantal Festival to court a national-level corporate sponsor by providing analytics in our sponsorship proposal, proving the value of investment. I have also worked as an advisory role on the lodging tax committee, providing them with this newly acquired data to assist them in their decision-making process to ensure Pullman sees a return on their investments. Three of Pullman's signature events, Three Forks River and Arts Festival, the Fourth of July, and the National Lantal Festival, were successfully pulled off this past year despite the disruption of the project downtown. On May 18, the chamber partnered with the City of Pullman Downtown Pullman Association and the Pullman Civic Trust to host the Second Annual Three Forks River and Arts Festival. And we also held our Fourth of July fireworks in Sunnyside Park, which had a great turnout and saw a near return to pre-pandemic numbers. And then the National Lantal Festival once again returned on August 17. Last year's festival, we saw over 90 vendors and continuously expanding three-on-three basketball tournament hosted by our city's park and rec department. As festival director, I worked closely with the city and our festival committee to brainstorm a way to save the parade from being canceled due to the closure of Main Street. And after bouncing around various options, we rerouted the parade to skirt the ballfields and finish on Lantal Lane. This took a great deal of time and effort, and I would like to take a moment to specifically thank the City of Pullman Civil Engineer Ruth Younts for her dedication to safely rerouting our parade, and to our parade coordinator Sergeant Greg Umbright with the Pullman Police Department for his passion in making sure that this happened. We continued our partnership with the Downtown Pullman Association and assisted their efforts to host the Second Annual Downtown Vibes Lantal Fest Friday by providing marketing and sponsorship opportunities. And the event was very well-received and generated a lot of much-needed downtown traffic. Over this past year, we also collaborated on several projects that showcased not only our community, but the region as a whole. In May, we partnered with Coogs First on a three-part mini-series with television host and Food Network podcaster Jamie Sire, a WSU alumni, as she returned back home to Visit Pullman and explore its past, present, and future. The three-part series can be found in the blog section of VisitPullman.com, as well as on all of our socials. In February, we re-engaged the talents of Dan Walker of Dan Walker Productions to update the several-years-old Palouse scenic byway vignettes. This series wrapped in the fall and was shared in a presentation with our friends over at Port of Whitman County's Economic Development Informational last November. The vignettes can be found on VisitPullman.com and PalouseScenicByway.org. And the first run of Livability Magazine, Life on the Palouse, was released last spring, which is a cross-border collaboration with the Moscow Chamber of Commerce that highlights the many benefits of living in our region. You can find a digital download on VisitPullman.com under Live and Work tab. So what is next? Improvements to enhance our new website will continue, taking into consideration recommendations provided in our quarterly SEO reports. Additionally, we will be launching the site's extranet for our businesses and organizations to have more ownership over their respective website listings and better communication throughout. We will continue to increase our digital presence and beefing up our digital asset library by continuing to work with local creators. To promote one of our most valuable tourism assets, the Palouse scenic byway, we will be launching a self-guided audio tour with Travel Stories GPS, which should be completed by early summer. And we are currently finishing up the second edition of Livability's Life on the Palouse, which should be available early this upcoming second quarter. Como TV in Seattle will feature Pullman on their Seattle Refined Series featuring Pacific Northwest Escapes. This package includes a month-long promotion leading up to the episode, which will air in September. I'll be meeting with the production team next month, and we'll begin shooting in June. And to keep our visitors and community up to date and well-informed on all things Pullman, we will be working on our very own Visit Pullman app, which should launch, oops, this is going to fall off, which should be launching before the end of the year. In closing, I would like to thank all of you for your time this evening, and while it is my sincere hope that you find value in the work being done under this contract, I would like you to also consider the amount of time and effort that went into each of these projects. My first full year in this role, 2024, was spent building a base for our tourism efforts while simultaneously setting up the necessary contracts to build upon that base in 2025. As the current tourism contract is set to expire at the end of the year, I will spend the next several months closing these projects out, leaving 2026 to be completely ignored and unplanned for. This is an enormous setback for the work that has been done to move Pullman's tourism momentum forward, and with the way the contract is currently structured, I find it highly improbable that Pullman will ever gain the traction it claims it desires, as outlined in the RFP, with any semblance of long-term success. In that, I thank you all.
Thank you. Anything back, sorry, okay, not back free. So with that, any questions?
Thank you both for the presentation and the incredible work that you're doing, and for frankly, bringing Pullman tourism into the 21st century, and specifically 2025. We've needed this for a very long time. So, that being said, I also want to recognize that you guys took the reins and stepped up to the plate in terms of the events calendar. That has been talked about for probably about 20 years, ever since I've been around, that, hey, we need a centralized events calendar, and you made it happen. And I hope people continue to to remember it and put something out there, and you're making it user-friendly. The other piece that I've been impressed with is your focus on data analytics and the geo-fencing, which, again, has been around for a long time, and we need that kind of data if we're going to be able to continue to support our sponsors and give them the information that they want. When we're asking for thousands of dollars to commit to a small town, they want data to show that it's effective. So that's an incredible investment that needs to continue. So with that, those are my comments, and great job.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Alexis, Marie, Madeline, Audrey, you know, I can't imagine losing any of you. So it's really difficult to hear that, and especially, you know, there's been a lot of changes in the last few years, and I feel really bad that the chamber had been called into question about things in the last, you know, couple of years. It's, it was wrong. But we find ourselves here. I want to tell you, Alexis, and I know, Madeline, both of you, I mean, this is really awesome. I have it up here on my phone, I have it up here on the laptop. It is really cool, and I know going to to the event, the events are so easy to put in, and as has already been said, I, it is putting us all, because I see chamber intertwined with the city, into the next century. So I don't know if there's actually any question I have, I just wanted to say I can't imagine losing any of you, and I really, really hope that we don't, and that we can be better as a city. So those are my comments.
Councilmember Fagerin?
Thank you. No questions for me, for me either, other than simply thank you. I routinely go on the Visit Pullman website to go on the events, and I get lost in that beautiful full-page video that's on there right now. I'm looking at it right now. You see the park, frisbee golf, pickleball courts, I mean, it is simply beautiful, and thank you for putting that together. And then also, as somebody who has filled out an event on the Visit Pullman website, it is really easy. Thank you so much. I submitted, I had an information session to publish for my main job, and it got on there perfectly, and thank you so much. We actually got a lot of traffic just from the Visit Pullman website, so thank you so much. It looks so beautiful.
I'm so glad to hear that. Thank you.
Councilmember Jalera?
Thank you so much for your presentations. Very informative. I have two questions. The first one is, I think it's great that you're engaging with our state representatives, and it seems like in a very close way, like twice a month. I guess my first question is, what are some of the state bills you're currently following during this legislative session?
I don't have the bill numbers in front of me, but we are watching closely the rent control bill, which is, it could impact negatively. We have a lot of rental management companies here in town, as you well know, so we're watching that one really close. There's some good and bad about some of those bills, right? So that was, that's one particularly. We had been following the natural gas restrictions as well, and I think that's still an uphill battle, you know, that that could really affect a lot of us negatively, especially in eastern Washington, not just in Pullman.
Awesome. And then I guess the second question, thanks for answering that question, is around the types of events that could be submitted on the events calendar. Are there any restrictions, or what's the nature of the event that are, that is allowed on the events calendar?
You know, obviously, we are going to be mindful of things that might be outwardly offensive, but right now, my main goal is to make sure that it's Pullman events. We're not accepting any events that are submitted to us from outside of our community in the immediate. I have made some exceptions for the Port of Whitman County, because they drive traffic to us as well when they have events, for instance, down at the KOA. But we, for now, will be just sticking within Pullman.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Parks, and then after that will be Councilmember Wright?
Thank you. Thank you too, and every, all of the employees, so much for all you've done. When you, when you lay it out, Alexis and Marie, it's really, I'm really glad that we and the community can hear it. A couple of thoughts I had was, you know, your legislative involvement that Councilmember Jalera spoke to, I mean, our community doesn't realize you're meeting twice a month with our legislators, and that's, that's no easy task, as you on the committee know. It's, it's just, that's really, really advocacy, true advocacy for our community, and I, I think we all appreciate that. I do know that the Lantal Festival would not have happened without the work of the chamber last year. I'm involved in the parade, and it was, you know, not always pretty, but it was a can-do attitude and spirit, and we did it. And the children were there, and everybody was, it was really good, and I really don't think it would have happened if if some other entity were involved. And I really don't think it would have happened if, if some other entity were involved. And what's what I love about the team you have now is it's, we can tell that you, you personally are invested in this community and this region, and I think that means a lot. And then finally, I'll just compliment your exemplary Board of Directors. I mean, they're just community leaders all sitting right there, and even the people who aren't here as well. So I, I think it's a win-win all the way around, and I, and I thank you.
Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been involved with the Chamber and the Chamber Board since 1989. This by far is the most complete tourism operation that I have seen over the years. Doesn't mean that the other tourism operations were bad, it just means that this is the complete package, and we have all been the recipients of the wonderful work that they've done over the last couple of years. My goal through this, being both on the City Council, as well as the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, as well as the Chamber Board of Directors, is to try to get us to a point where this does not ever happen again, that the, the solid work of this tourism group be brought into question by virtue of how the contract has been constructed. And my goal in working with all of the groups that I just mentioned is that we somehow come to an agreement of how to get to yes with this, so that all of the parties end up to be positively affected rather than negatively, as has been the conversation thus far. And I think it behooves us as a city to continue to work very closely with one of our best and most loyal partners, and I will take that on as a personal challenge to ensure that that happens going forward. And so Marie, Alexis, Madeline, Audrey, all of the directors of, of the Board and the Executive Board, you have my pledge that I will continue to work with all of you to try to ensure that that happens in the best way possible. Hindsight is always 2020, and we certainly could have done some things differently as pertains to the contract, but going forward, let's see what we can do and work on together in advance of, within a six-month period of time at the expiration of the current contract. So I think we, we owe that to our city, we owe it to our employees at the Chamber who benefit from the services that we provide. We just need to do a better job with that. And again, kudos to all of you at the Chamber that have made this tourism activity such a tremendous success. Thank you.
Councilmember Weller.
I'm the hated double-dipper. So I did have a question about regional events. So I keep blowing this horn that, that Pullman, the region, we're stronger together as a region. For such a long time, we've been kind of this standalone, you know? We're, you know, on the hill and the rural area, you know, we don't think as much about, but we're so strong, whether it's Palouse, whether it's Colfax or Tico or any of those. And I greatly appreciate you putting the scenic byway on there and kind of edging into the, the regional. I would like to know if there's some time in the future where combining with Colfax Chamber or Palouse, where it can be brought to bear that, that really powerful region that we have, where we can share events. And when I talked to the downtown Whitney, I think it was, Colfax, she liked the idea of co-operation, collaborating, but also we, we compete, but being able to share out each other's so that we can become that powerhouse that I know we are. So my question, after that long tirade, was, is there plans, are there plans in the future to kind of do that, share out and?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, this is a brand-new website. It's a fledgling website. And so with that being said, we need to really firmly plant ourselves in our own community first and have a ripple effect outward. I agree with you. Pullman is a magnet for our smaller satellite communities that surround us on the Palouse, and they do depend on us to help drive traffic to and through the Pelus scenic byway, which is again why we're taking that regional approach to tourism. But as far as the calendar goes and events, we need to get it up and running and habitual for our own community before we encourage other people from outside our community, so that we have a strong vision of what it is we're trying to share, and that we want to share what's going on in Pullman right now. So yes, that is in the cards, just not right in the immediate.
Great. So thank you very much. I hope you heard just the strong appreciation that we have for the work that you're doing on the tourism contract. We're, we're definitely seeing incredible growth, great opportunity because of it, and the quality and expertise definitely shows through. So thank you very much, Marie, Alexis, Marie, the rest of your team, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jeff Albrecht, the Director of Finance and Administrative Services with Pullman's financial activities through fourth quarter of 2024. With that, Jeff.
Thank you, Council. I'm here to talk about how 2024 wrapped up financially, and we'll kind of walk through a little bit with some history, some of the items. So we always start with the general fund. General Fund is where we spend the majority of our time. It's, it's where a lot of the main services within the facility, within the city fall. Here you can take a look at revenues. We had seen nice growth of revenue for '21 to '22, and especially from '22 to '23, and we really saw that flatten out in 2024. So basically, the 2024 revenues were pretty much at the same level as '23. They were better than budget. Budget was developed back in 2022, and we're still kind of coming out of COVID, so there is certainly some uncertainty at that time. But, but the growth has been good, but I think something to really keep in mind and continue to monitor is that flattening that happened in 2024. My main source of revenue is, is property taxes. This has very little variance. By state statute, taxes on existing property can only go up by 1%. So that really is kind of been a 1% growth, and then if there is any new construction, that can add to that 1%. But I know there's been a lot of discussion out there about property valuations, and those certainly have created some fluctuations. Doesn't necessarily mean individual property can only go up by 1%, but the collective of existing property can only go up by 1%. So while it is a, our largest source of revenue, it is also one that has the least amount of growth in it, but it is also the most stable. Sales tax, the second biggest source of revenue for the general fund. We saw tremendous growth from '22 to '23, and really saw that level out and actually take a slight dip in 2024. Again, better than budget. Budget was developed kind of during COVID, when, when things were suppressed, but we did see some nice growth and exceed budget. But again, that, that trend line of a slight down is something that we really need to continue to monitor. Do keep in mind that this is actual revenue received by the city. So there's delay. So for example, a business will collect their prop, their sales tax in January, though we made it to the state in February, we'll get it in March. So there's always kind of a couple-month delay. So depending when you see, when you see us talk about sales tax numbers, sometimes we talk about the year that the sales actually occurred, sometimes we talk about when the revenue is received, because we are cash basis. There really wasn't a specific trend within 2024, so it's not like summer was low, or fall was low, or spring was low. Eight months were lower than the previous year, four months were higher, and those four months were based off a sales activity that was generated in December of '23, April of '24, August of '24, and October of '24. So not really a trend, but overall, eight of the 12 months were down compared to previous years. So definitely something that we need to keep. This is also the most volatile. While it is the second highest, it is the most volatile and can create the most fluctuation. Few other general fund revenues. Other use taxes, the main one being utilities tax. You can see there, again, saw some good growth, saw the flattening in '24. Admission tax was down. There is a little bit of a timing issue, so 2023 was a little bit higher because of timing, but we did see some drop-off in admissions tax. A large portion of that is related to WCU events, but there is other things that impacted that, such as the movie theater closing and some other activities within the city. Our licensing and permit revenue dipped. That's a trend that we've kind of been tracking for a little while. You did see that was one of the revenues that did go down in '23. I think there's a lot of licensing and permit that happened quickly out of COVID, kind of a buildup, and then it's kind of dipped back down in that construction. That's not the only, but that's a partial indicator of future construction, which is a really important thing for the city, both through the revenues from the construction and that growth for property taxes too. Intergovernmental revenues were down a little bit. '23 was, was a little bit of a peak year. That's a lot of revenues related to grants, intergovernmental allocation. So for example, the marijuana liquor tax is one that I put out as a subgroup there. We get an allocation from the state based off of those taxes collected. That stayed pretty flat really for the four-year period. Fees, fines, and penalties, the largest thing you see here is fees for services. Our recreation programs, for example, are a large one of this. Other fees for services that, that we provide and fines and penalties, again, saw some growth, and then kind of that level out in '24. And the last one is miscellaneous revenues. This actually has seen a couple good years of growth. A lot of that is related to some investment interest on, on funds, as interest rates kind of peaked in early 2024. And then we do receive the opioid settlement money that is distributed as part of those various lawsuits that were happening, and that gets recorded as miscellaneous revenue. So those are kind of some things that caused that, that increase over the last two years. General fund expenses, you see a fairly consistent trend line of growth. The revenues, you know, had a, had a little bit more variability on the trend line, the expenses have been pretty consistent. It was about a little over $32 million last year. That was better than budget. But while that was better than budget, I will note expenses exceeded revenues in the general fund by about $2.5 million last year. Wasn't entirely unexpected, but that's really something to keep in mind, because that's not a long-term sustainable issue, as you can imagine. Part of that growth in expenses was related to increasing capital expenses, and I'll show a little bit more on the next slide, but we had about $1.4 million of capital expenses in the general fund, and that's funded primarily through the CIP, set aside from sales tax, as well as Metro Parks, providing some support for some of those parks projects. So here's the capital expense. You see an extreme spike up here. That is not surprising. Capital was very suppressed in '20, '21, '22, coming out of COVID, and that was pretty common for a lot of organizations. So that's, large spike up is not surprising. Now, if that spike continues, that would be surprising to me. I think now we'll see that level out pretty much. We did come in under budget on capital expenditures. Some of that was due to delays in being able to do some projects, some of the projects that didn't proceed or came in under cost. And again, this is primarily funded through the, the general fund sales tax or through Metro Parks. But again, I would start to expect to see that capital, that, that spike really start to level off as we go to '25, and we're really back to normal capital expenditures. So just to give you a kind of idea of where the money goes, what the money's spent on within the general fund, about little less than two-thirds of it is spent on public safety, so law enforcement and fire and ambulance are our largest expenses. Not a surprise that, that's fairly common. The other areas you see is legislation and administration, the library, community development, and our parks and recreation program, and I'll give you a little bit more breakdown on each of those here in a second. So legislative expenses, this is really the council. You see, that's been a pretty consistent amount. '23, we saw a little bit of a spike up, as we had the county, we owed fees for elections. We had a pretty high election fee, being a year where we had a mayor, as, as well as several city councils. So we had a little higher election fees that year, but this has been pretty consistent and pretty much right on budget for what we had budgeted for 2024. Finance and administration, this includes our finance department, our clerk, our HR, our attorney, and then we brought communications on board in, I think it was '22, and grants on board partially through '23. So those were kind of new areas that were brought on board through that. The lower line gives the capital expenditures. We don't have a lot of capital expenditures in this area. The main one is a software program that we've been doing with our EAP software, which has been phased projects. So we completed the financial phase in '23, just recently completed the permit and licensing phase, and are now about two-thirds of the way through our utility billing phase, which should go live this summer. So that's where our capital expense lies there. But again, you can see performing well overall to budget, and you can kind of see the, the growth there over the years. One other thing to, to note, in 2024, we did have higher than what I'd be normal for audit expenses. The state auditor had gotten behind in their audits during COVID, so we actually basically paid for about two and a half years with the audits in '24. We finished up the 2020 audit, we completed the '21 and '22 audits and started the '23 audit. So we'll be caught up. We're, we're gonna wrap up our '23 audit this week, actually, so we'll finally be caught up on our audits with the state, which will, will be nice. Law enforcement, again, you see a fairly steady trend line for expenses up, a little bit of growth in the last couple of years on the capital piece. The budget was about 2.7, we came in about $2.1 million on law enforcement expenses, and about 171 of that, 171,000 of that was related to capital. Fire and ambulance, again, you see a trend line, you see a little bit of a spike up this last year, but a fairly consistent growth. You know, I think anytime you look at the public safety, there, there's always a tendency for those to continue to see more regulations, which of course, a lot of times means more expenses, more training, those types of things. But you see then about $9.8 million of expenditures, of which about $230,000 was related to capital. Community and economic development, so this encompasses our protective inspections, our planning, and our economic development divisions. Pretty consistent expenses. They had a little bit of staffing gap, I think, in '22, so that caused a little bit lower expenses in '22, but other than that, pretty consistent growth, and really right, right in line with budget of where you'd expect. Our library had about 1.0, little under $2 million of expenses last year. We did have a capital budget of, capital expenditures of about $55,000 that did exceed budget. I will note that was exceeded because they received a donation from the Friends of Neil Library to do some additional work in addition to what had been budgeted for some offices and things like that. So while they did, it did exceed budget, it was covered by a donation, so that related. Library and, and parks and rec, you're gonna see that trend line probably increase a little bit more than you would in some areas, just because they really had some expenses that were down during COVID, because they were probably the two most affected areas during COVID. So their growth mine's gonna be a little bit more, but again, I would kind of expect that to start leveling off a little bit now that they've really back to normal operations in '24 and, and most of, of '23. There's park and recreation expenses, definitely saw some increase in capital expenses in '23 and '24, which is great. I'm sure a lot of people have seen some of the wonderful park projects that have occurred over the last couple of years, which has been very beneficial. So that's related to some of the increase that you see in '23 and '24. They've also, and a lot of their participant recreation areas have received really some good growth. That does also generate some revenue, which is nice. So some of those increases in expenses are offset by revenue in, in those cases. So that's the end of the general fund. I'll move into some of our other funds. First one being Streets, Notarial Streets. So you see the, the major jump here from '23 to '24, and of course, that's related to the downtown project. So the downtown project expenses are housed here. So out of that $15 million, a little over $10 million was related to the downtown project, the other $5 million, or just under $5 million related to other streets projects. So again, you'll see that drop back down in '25, as there's very, very few expenses, that project's almost completely done. So there's, there's just a few minor expenses that will be rolling in in '25. Our utilities fund, you see a spike there in '23. We, we definitely had an increase in our capital expenditures in '23. A lot of that was related to equipment that was kind of, again, put off during COVID, either because of uncertainty, or a lot of times because of lead time, just to get, get some of that equipment. So you saw a little spike dip back down, and that really dip in expenses is related primarily to the- primarily to the dip in capital. But it wasn't a budget, both on capital. A lot of those capitals that are budgeted sometimes are affiliated with either the ability to do work, the timing, or in some cases, even grants. Utilities is definitely one that I think we need to continue to evaluate the long-term capital needs of, and is going to be really important as we go forward. Transit, you see that kind of dip in expenses and then a little bit of spike up. That's mostly related to the capital, so you can see the capital has a very similar trend line, kind of goes down. Did some fleet replacements in '21 and '22, not so much in '23 and '24. You do see the expenses kind of climb up a little bit back in '24, not related to capital, and a large portion of that is related to the additional services that were provided to the airport. That is currently grant-funded, so there is some revenues to offset that increase in expenses, but there was some additional staffing costs related to that airport service that was added. Internal service funds, so this makes up our equipment rental division, buildings, IT and GAS. So basically, these are departments that their sole purpose is to serve the city. So they're internal service funds. Again, you saw that increase in capital expenditures in '23. That was probably a little bit of a buildup, kind of returned more to a normal level in '24. And so you see total expenses, and again, these expenses are all city-related, so somebody else in the city, a different department in the city, is paying these expenses. So kind of that's out neutral as far as the total funds for the city. Our civic improvement fund, which is basically a lodging tax. So you saw, you know, again, a good recovery out of COVID. 2020, 2021, even 2022 were pretty depressed as there was not a lot of travel going on or staying in hotels. You've seen that growth in '23. It was good to see that still have a little bit of growth in '24. It's certainly leveling off some, but not quite as much as some of our revenues, so it was good to see some growth. And again, I think that's something to continue to monitor of how that works. I'd expect that to hopefully have not the same increases we've had previously, but hopefully to continue to still have some small increases. So a few final thoughts. Most of the revenues were flat. 2023 was a pretty strong revenue year for us, and some of that was, I think, some built-up stuff coming out of COVID for capacity, but most of our revenues flattened out in 2023, and that'll be important for us to continue to monitor. Revenue and expenses were both positive to budget, which is good. The downside, though, is, as I mentioned, general fund expenses exceeded revenues. So while we did perform well to budget, we need to really continue to evaluate ways to bring up those revenue sources because the expenses are increasing at a higher rate than the revenues are. Cash levels are down, and that was expected, both either to the increased expenditures to revenues, as well as obviously the expenditure of the downtown funds. So we received those funds in 2021 and 2022 for the project. Had spent a little bit before 2024, but not a lot, and of course, have pretty much expended all of those funds to date. So I think it's really going to be important for us to continue to monitor revenues going forward, obviously control expenses, and I think we'll need to continue to also evaluate what our capital needs are in the future for some of our aging facilities and aging equipment. So with that, I will take any questions.
And Jeff, so I first want to start that I really appreciate the work that you're doing. If council thinks about when we went through the budget process, looking at '25, '26, we saw concerns about where the trend lines and where things were going. And if you looked on each of those slides where it was what was what we had budgeted versus what we spent, it shows that we started the process during the budget process of understanding we needed to start reducing those expenses, and it really shows that that work has been going on in order to create the needed savings in order to make it into 2025 and 2026. So I appreciate that very much. With that, any questions? The name has? Councilmember Delara?
Yeah, thanks for your presentation. So we started collecting tax revenue for the Transportation Benefit District at the start of the year. When can we expect to know how much revenue that's generated?
Sure, that'll be part of my quarterly budgets going forward. So just like the rest of the regular sales tax, there's like a two-month delay. So while businesses started collecting in January, I think we received $700 so far, and that's because it just hasn't. So March will be the first month that we receive a, what I would guess, a normal amount. So, but that'll be part of my quarterly updates going forward, is I'll make sure to include what the revenues are from that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry, just to add on to that, and I have been updating the council on the monthly sales tax. If you look at that, you would have seen that piece there, and I do plan to do that on a monthly basis, as well as Jeff's overlap.
Cool.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your attention to this. This is something very important as council, you need to be watching, because we really need to stay on top of these things as we're looking going forward with the budget. I appreciate the team that's working on this for us, so thank you, Jeff. Next item is the consent agenda. The items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion to city council without discussion. I entertain a motion to read the consent agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Second. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, that if you could please read the consent agenda.
Thank you. Item one is a motion to dispense with the reading of the regular meeting minutes of March 4, 2025, and approve them as submitted. Item two, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 2011-29740 through 2011-29798 totaling $646,171.91. Item three, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 2011-29799 through 2011-29882 totaling $689,369.75. Item four, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 2011-29883 through 2011-29888 electronic transfers numbered 193 through 202 totaling $1,141,345.16. Item five, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 2011-29889 through 2011-29951 totaling $287,810.84. Item six, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 2011-29952 through 2011-2965 electronic transfers numbered 204, 213, 214, and 217 through 226 totaling A motion to authorize a lodging tax grant to Cougs First for an amount up to $17,500 for the Cougs First QB Classic Golf Tournament. A motion to authorize a lodging tax grant to WSU Football Cougar Legends for an amount up to $3,600 for WSU Football Legends in Our Minds and Fading Fast Golf Tournament. Item nine, a motion to authorize a lodging tax grant to promote Pullman LLC for an amount up to $400,000, I'm sorry, $400. Not $400,000, $400 for Blooms and Toons Festival. Item 10, a motion to authorize a lodging tax grant to International Community for an amount up to $800 for Bengali New Year's Celebration. Item 11, ratified change order number six to the Pullman Downtown Improvements Project. Item 12, resolution number R-11-25, a resolution declaring certain property of the City of Pullman to be excess and surplus property and authorizing the means of disposal. And finally, item 13, resolution number R-12-25, a resolution authorizing the purchase of OpenGov Cartograph Asset Management Software and the execution of a contract between the City of Pullman and Verdosoft LLC for software implementation.
Do any council members desire to have any items removed from the consent agenda to be discussed separately? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And with that, that's done. So next, we're on to regular agenda item. The first one up, ordinance 2503, and Jeff Albrecht, Director of Finance and Administrative Services, has this one.
Oh, yes, this is an ordinance to accept donation of restricted funds related to Veterans Park. So a little over, I guess about two and a half years ago, we started planning to do a new park dedicated to veterans within Pullman. The American, local American Legion Post has done a lot of assistance and fundraising with the hope to fund that through donations and grant funding. So this is an acceptance of the great work that they've done of raising just $300,000 for the most recent period and accept that into the city with the dedication for that park development.
Great. And we have a couple of members in the audience, and definitely we thank you for the hard work that you've had to recognize our veterans in this way. With that, any questions or discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance number 25-03.
Second.
Second. With that, Pat, if you could read the ordinance?
Yes, ordinance number 25-03, an ordinance accepting a restricted monetary contribution from the American Legion Maynard Price Post 52 to the City of Pullman to be used for Veterans Park.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The passes. Next item is ordinance 2504. This one is, and you've heard some about it in the public comment, the DPA, the Downtown Pullman Association, received a grant, and as a part of that grant, they wanted to provide improvements to the downtown project. The areas that they've, that, within this, is money that they provide the city for us to be able to purchase banners for mounting on the light poles. This is, so this, oh, it's upside down, so that doesn't help. So this one, so you have a two-sided in that way. This was intended for the winter months. The reason why it didn't get up is because as a part of the downtown project, the mounts haven't come in to be able to put them up, so that's one of those things that is still left to go as a part of the finishing up. So the light poles currently, even though we have access to the downtown and using the downtown, our light poles are still part of the construction process because not only do they need to put the banner mounts on, but they also need to get the hanging flower basket mounts also as a part of it. And once we have that, then that's when we can start getting the banners up, and then also within it, they've purchased $32,000 worth of materials related to lights for the downtown, white lights for on the light poles, and then colored lights for the tree areas within the High Street Plaza. And I definitely appreciate, this is one of those things that they got to grant a long time ago, but because the project is still in process, we have not been able to actually utilize it and put it, and put these out. We had these ready to go last winter, but because we, the poles weren't done, we weren't able to do it. But with this, this is their donation that they'd like to make for this, and I appreciate just the work that the DPA has done. With that, any questions? So I'd entertain a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance 25-04, accepting a donation from the Downtown Pullman Association for $42,000 in cash and materials for downtown enhancements.
Second.
With that, if you could read just specific ordinance. No, you're fine.
Yes, thank you. Ordinance number 25-04, an ordinance accepting a restricted monetary donation from the Downtown Pullman Association to the City of Pullman to be used for Main Street pedestrian light pole banners and downtown lighting enhancements.
That, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The passes. Next up, next two, we have Kara Haley up for our resolution R-1325. With that?
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. This item before you is a resolution to award the Terraview Waterline Extension to Airport Contract to the lowest responsible bidder. I'm going to pull up an exhibit here while I get into the next part. So this project consists of constructing 6,000 linear feet of 16-inch diameter water main along northeast Terraview Drive and northeast Airport Drive. The project will extend the city's potable water system out to the airport vicinity, which is presently serviced by Washington State University and is limited. Completion of the project will make annexation and development in the area more feasible and appealing. Bids for the project were received and opened on March 4th. Eleven bids were received. Each bid was reviewed thoroughly, and the lowest responsible bidder is JR Construction based out of Post Falls, Idaho, with a bid total of $1,727,206.20. Included in your packet, you will find the bid results for each of the 11 bids, along with the engineer's estimate. As you can see, the bids were competitive, ranging from roughly $1.7 million to $2.3 million. The engineer's estimate is $2.15 million. The low bid is roughly $400,000 below the engineer's estimate, which equates to a 20% difference. Following an in-depth review, staff determined that the low bidder's submitted prices are reflective of actual prices to complete the project and that the low bidder, JR Construction, is qualified to perform the work. Expenses for this project will be covered with local funds from the utility capital projects budget of the utility fund. Construction of this project is expected to commence as early as May 5th, when WSU transitions to summer break, and be complete by mid to late October. The resolution before you tonight has been prepared to award the Terraview Waterline Extension to Airport Project to the low bidder, JR Construction. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be glad to take any questions.
Any question? Councilmember Waller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kara. I had a question. So it looks like it cuts through a person's property. Is that, I mean, we have?
That's actually city right-of-way. It's before Terraview Drive was reconstructed. That used to be where the county road was, so it is all in city property. But we have been, obviously, having conversations with WSU, so they're aware of the project. We've coordinated with them because there will be a shutdown of their existing line, a disconnection at two points. So yeah, that's very observant. One of the reasons we bypassed it is, you know, obviously, it saves material and length to go all the way down to Airport Road and back up is a longer length of pipe. It's also trickier terrain, so it was advantageous for several reasons.
Well, thank you for educating me. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Fager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kara.
Yes.
I asked this in the previous city council as well. I noticed quite a large difference between the engineer's estimate and the accepted bid. I think you mentioned it was 20% just for this project. I think the one I caught notice was a decant facility as well. Just considering the large savings and the number of proposals received, do you find that that savings is specific to this project, or is it more of an ongoing trend of?
I'm hopeful it's an ongoing trend. This project is really an appealing project for contractors. I've never, with the city, had 11 bids received for a contract, so it's a fairly large amount, so it brings in more interested contractors than some of our smaller contracts do. We got it out at a really good time. It does seem like the market right now, like I said, fingers crossed, seems to be a little bit more in favor for us for the time being. If you, I didn't pull up the bid summary here. I mean, the prices were only stepping up by $100,000 to $150,000 between each of the bidders. So having the engineer's estimate be within the range and then having all of those, really the spread isn't that great between all of them. Those were pretty good bid results. I just think it was a competitive project, and the bidders kind of knew it, and a lot of them didn't have projects signed up yet for and a lot of them didn't have projects signed up yet for this year, so they came in really wanting the project.
Good to hear. Thank you.
I hope it continues. I don't know.
Any other discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
Move to adopt Resolution 13-25.
Second.
Without that, if you could read the resolution, please.
Resolution number R-13-25, a resolution accepting the bid of JR Construction for the Terraview Waterline Extension to the Airport project and authorizing execution and delivery of the contract for said project.
Any discussion? Not. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, it passes. And Kara for the next one?
Yeah, thank you. So this next item is a resolution to award the Orchard Drive and Valley Road Resurfacing Contract to the lowest responsible bidder. Staff last discussed this project with City Council in July of last year when the request was made and approved to submit a grant application to the Transportation Improvement Board, TIB. That application was successful and TIB awarded funding to the city for this project. As a brief reminder, for those present and watching from home, this project consists of a two-inch grind and overlay on Orchard Drive from Stadium Way northeast to Valley Road and on Valley Road from Orchard Drive west to Cove Way. Bids for the project were received and opened on March 11th. Three bids were received. Each bid was reviewed thoroughly and the lowest responsible bidder is Motley Motley Inc. with a bid total of $371,295. Included in your packet, you will find the bid results for each of the three bids, along with the engineer's estimate. In this case, the low bid is below the engineer's estimate by roughly $25,000. Review by staff has determined that the submitted prices are reflective of the actual price to complete the project and that the low bidder, Motley Motley Inc., is qualified to perform the work. The current funding commitment by TIB for this project is $314,083,000. No, okay. I practiced this one and it got me. $314,083,000 with the city responsible for any remaining project costs. Local funds from the Arterial Street Fund will cover the city's contribution to this project, currently estimated at $83,212. These indicated funding amounts include the construction contract amount we're talking about tonight, as well as design and construction engineering costs. If approved tonight, construction of this project is expected to occur between early May and mid-August during WSU's summer term. The resolution before you tonight has been prepared to award the Orchard Drive and Valley Road Resurfacing Contract to the low bidder, Motley Motley Inc. And I'd be happy to take questions.
So any questions? Councilmember Waller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Kara, I, this is awesome. Walking by there all the time, it really needs to be done. Two questions. One, it doesn't include the sidewalk. That's the first question. Correct?
It does not include the sidewalk. WSU and the city contributed some funds, just completed the path on the east side. And then there are, you can, I don't have the figure on anymore. So with that previous project that happened last year, they upgraded several of the sidewalk ADA ramps. We're gonna do the remaining three that need to happen within the resurfacing limits. So a little bit of sidewalk work, just at like three ADA ramps.
Okay, maybe that answers the second one I was gonna ask. I didn't see a legend, but the asterisks, asterisk, is that what the ADA ramps are?
Yeah, so the three red dots kind of on the west side of the project are the ones that we're going to do. And I actually stole this figure from what Valerie put together last time we brought this before you. So that was showing the yellow dots are what were replaced last summer.
Cool. Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution Number R1425.
Second.
Second. With that, that, if you could read it, please.
Yes. Resolution Number R-14-25, a resolution accepting the bid of Motley Motley Inc. for the Orchard Drive and Valley Road Resurfacing Project and authorizing execution and delivery of the contract for said project.
Any discussion? Councilmember Delara?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm really excited for the project. I know ASWSU came to specifically point out Orchard Drive and since we're seeing them tomorrow, we can tell them about the good news. So, yep.
That's good. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, we're going to be going into executive session. This time, the council will adjourn to executive session pursuant to, while the Provision for Open Public Meeting Act does not apply, discussions related to interpretation or adoption or application of labor agreement or the portion of a meeting during which the governing body is planning or adopting the strategy or portion to take during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiation or grievance remediation proceedings or reviewing proposals made during the course of negotiations proceedings, the City Council is announcing its intention to discuss such matters in executive session. The executive session is expected to last approximately 15 minutes. If it becomes necessary to extend the executive session, someone will return to announce the anticipated additional time needed by City Council. The council does not anticipate taking action following the executive session.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I need to interrupt. An issue has come up during the meeting and we need to add to the executive session language. I have it up in front of me and I'm prepared to read it if you would like, or I can come show you on your sheet which additional items that we need to add.
If you could read it, please.
Thank you. In addition to the items previously mentioned, also to discuss with legal counsel representing the city matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency potential litigation concerning litigation that the agency reasonably believes may be commenced by or against the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in the official capacity. Mayor, we're gonna recommend that you add an additional five minutes to your time. And again, we also do not believe that we'll be back for a decision. I apologize for not getting to you sooner.
So it'll be 20 minutes and you need five minutes to set up? So we will start at 7:12 in the executive session.
It's 7:42. Bring council back into session, and with that I entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn the meeting?
You guys ready to vote?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.